Article eight has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to fund the Fox Hill School Building. Now, I guess I have to read this. It is hereby requested that Article eight be moved as follows. That the town appropriate the sum of one hundred million, four hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars for the purpose of paying costs of designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new Fox Hill Elementary School located at two fifty-two Fox Hill Road, Burlington, Mass. zero one eight zero three, including the payment of all costs incidental or related there to for the project. Which schools facilities, I need to keep on. Which schools facilities shall have an anticipated useful life as an educational facility for the instruction of schoolchildren for at least fifty years and for which the town may be eligible for a grant from Massachusetts School Building Authority, said amount to be expended under the direction of the School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under MGL Chapter forty-four or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The town acknowledges that the MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any project costs the town incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the town, provided further that any grant that the town may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of forty-seven and forty-one hundredths percent of eligible approved costs as determined by the MSBA, or two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA. And that the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amounts set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the town and the MSBA. Okay. Let's cover a couple of quick votes. Ways and Means vote on this. Just the vote, please, Doug.
Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero.
Ways and Means will also be speaking again later on this. School Committee vote? Ms. Monaco.
School Committee voted unanimously five zero in favor.
Thank you. And I understand the Select Board took a vote. Mr. Morandi.
Thank you, Ms. Morandi. The Select Board took a vote, four in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. Capital Budget. Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Precinct seven. Capital Budget voted four zero one in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Anybody else take a position? I don't believe so, but. Okay. Well, then, let's move on to the presentations. We will start with a presentation by the, by the School Committee and School Department, and then it will be followed up by a presentation by Mr. Davidson from the Ways and Means Committee. It's all yours. Ms. Masardo.
Yep. Thank you. My name is Melissa Masardo. I am the Chair of the Fox Hill School Building Committee. For the last decade, there's been a rumor that this town is unwilling or uninterested in substantial capital investment in our school buildings. Most of you know that we spent thirteen years asking the MSBA for assistance with our top priority project at the time, Burlington High School. In twenty twenty, when we finally decided to switch gears, Fox Hill was immediately accepted into the MSBA program. This probably does not surprise many of you all here. Fox Hill is outdated and was overcrowded for many years. The technology infrastructure is insufficient, and the learning environment no longer meets modern educational standards. This limits our teachers' ability to deliver the kind of education our children deserve and the kind of education that Burlington itself, that Burlington prides itself on. No amount of good maintenance can help a building without air conditioning or real walls. I would like to thank this body for your investment in the feasibility study that brings us to this moment. I'm deeply grateful for the volunteers on the Fox Hill School Building Committee, along with the incredible work from our staff and experts who've shaped this plan. Along with myself and Dr. Conti, you'll hear tonight from Steve Brown from Dorn Whittier and Donna Denisco from Denisco Design, whose team's knowledge and insights were invaluable. I also want to thank the Fox Hill staff, townwide boards, and countless residents who've contributed to this important project.
Good evening. My name's Steve Brown from Dorn Whittier. We're representing the town as owners' project managers. And one of the primary responsibilities is, as OPM, owners' project manager, is to set forth and develop a clear project plan throughout the feasibility process. What began in twenty 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 was the town's application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority's grant program known as the SOI, Statement of Interest. A few months later, in February of twenty twenty-two, town meeting approved one and a half million dollars to fund the feasibility study. That feasibility study was to develop options for responsible and financially appropriate solutions for the future of Fox Hill's school. The first half of the feasibility study was all about uncovering potential options, understanding the limitations, challenges, and opportunities of the existing site and building, and really unlifting every stone and asking as many questions as possible to put forth every viable option as we look forward to the future. This is known as the Preliminary Design Program, or the PDP. That process uncovered nine potential options, which covered renovation only, addition in renovations, and new constructions for both consolidated schools with Pine Glen and Fox Hill-only options at the existing sites. The second half of the feasibility study was all about drilling down those nine potential options and arriving at one preferred option. The decisions and challenges and process was a diligent and challenging one. It ultimately culminated in the selection of a Fox Hill-only preferred option at the existing site. That process, both before, critical decisions were, were organized and discussed at public forums, and surely thereafter, the decisions of the building committee, after taking into consideration the public's comment, were then disclosed at future community meetings to deliver and communicate a clear and open transparent process. In February of twenty-four, Massachusetts School Building Authority accepted Burlington's preferred option so that we may develop and further refine the single preferred option in schematic design. The first six months of twenty twenty-four were all about drilling down and further investigating the scope, the schedule, and the budget for that preferred option. Just a few weeks ago, in August, the MSBA at their Board of Directors meeting with a vote of confidence in support of the preferred option, voted to appropriate and to confirm their funding agreement for the, for the, for the remainder of the project should it be fortunate to continue. That's a quick summary of the process. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Conti to talk about enrollment.
All right. Hi, I'm really excited to be here. This has been four and a half years for my staff putting this work together, and they've just done an incredible job. In order to work with the MSBA as a partner, you have to accept certain aspects of, of their process. One of them is the warrant language that the moderator read to you. It seems awkward, but that's their, their language that they require. An important part of the design process, at least initially, you have to sign off on the MSBA's enrollment projection. So we were invited into their grant process, which is a highly competitive process, in twenty twenty-two, and they do a ten-year enrollment projection that is very sophisticated, but you have to agree to their numbers if you're going to continue in their grant process. And their numbers actually have proven out to be relatively accurate across the Commonwealth, so they do have a track record of that. Burlington currently has declining enrollment. As you can see, sort of the trends, and they're projecting the enrollment decline into the future, into the future, past the opening date of the building. And using their projection, they said, they believe that our elementary population, grades kindergarten through five, is going to be around fifteen hundred ninety-two in twenty twenty-eight when the building opens. So that's the number that they look at. Very interestingly, when they look at elementary schools, they don't look at sort of a single building, they look at a town's elementary, the availability of elementary classrooms across the entire town. So they really look at the town as if it has elementary classrooms available, again, across multiple buildings. So the, where they ended up, and I'm going to go to the next slide, is the chart on the left. There were some, a lot of conversation about where the Model three twenty-five came from for Fox Hill. And essentially, what the MSBA did is they took the number of classrooms, full-size classrooms that were available, taking Fox Hill offline, so they looked at the full-size classrooms at Francis Wyman, Memorial, and Pine Glen. And then what the MSBA does is they populate those classrooms with, with students. And again, another very interesting part of this project in Burlington is, MSBA has to establish a standard. They work with, again, communities across the entire Commonwealth, so they have to have a very structured process, so they treat every community the same. When they do this math in any other community, and when they initially did this math in Burlington, they distribute elementary students at twenty-three students per classroom. That's the math that they use. And that model, even though it's the MSBA model for every community in the Commonwealth, didn't fit the character and the practice of our elementary classrooms in Burlington, which have a much lower class ratio. So at that point, we scheduled a meeting, and Mr. Murphy, Tom Murphy, in the back of the room, was Chair of the School Committee at the time. And I know Mr. Murphy really made a strong case on behalf of the town to the Executive Director and the executive staff at the MSBA to say that their, the twenty-three per students per classroom that they applied across the state, again, didn't fit with the Burlington character. And he made a very compelling argument because he had, we had historical data, and we also had, again, a strong support from the entire School Committee that our community valued keeping class sizes small. So the MSBA agreed to apply a different ratio for Burlington than they applied to any other community across the Commonwealth, and that ratio was eighteen students per class. And again, as competitive as the grant process is, making that change for Burlington was, was exceptional, and I can't state that strongly enough. So essentially, what they did is they took the fifteen ninety-two, they took the full-size classrooms, as I mentioned, across Francis Wyman, Pine Glen, and Memorial, and they populated classrooms with eighteen students each, and the balance at the end of that was three hundred and twenty-five students. The three twenty-five does not mean that's the students that populate a school. That doesn't mean that's how the, the district, the school, the town has to district elementary schools. It's just simply a math problem. So the MSBA looks at your total number of classrooms available and then distributes the students in those, across those classrooms. And again, in every other community, they typically apply twenty-three, and in Burlington, they applied eighteen because that better fit the character of our elementary schools. So that would be sort of the enrollment picture. The capacity of the schools are very different than that. If you look, again, at our full-size classrooms across all four elementary schools, including the proposed Fox Hill School, and you, again, put eighteen students in those, in those classrooms, we'll have a hundred and five full-size classrooms across the town. That is setting aside classrooms, separate classrooms for art and music. You can see if we put eighteen students in each of those classrooms, we sort of had a total capacity of close to nineteen hundred students. So that gives us, again, some room for growth. It doesn't account for specialized programs. Again, this is just applying the MSBA's math problem across the number of full-size classrooms, including the proposed Fox Hill School. I'm just going to go to the next one very quickly. There are a lot of adjectives used about the proposed Fox Hill because one of the options that we studied was a combined school with Pine Glen. Our preferred option was a, to maintain four, four elementary schools on four elementary school sites. You can see the difference with the existing Fox Hill to the new Fox Hill. The, the proposed Fox Hill is a larger school. It's fifty percent larger by square footage, so it's certainly not a small school. It would end up being our second-largest elementary school in town. It would have twenty-eight full-size classrooms, and that's setting aside classrooms for art, music, and a science, technology, engineering room. So we believe the new Fox Hill School as proposed has a capacity of about five hundred and four students. And I, and that makes sense, given that when we built the Memorial School, the Memorial School was, went through the same MSBA process, and that school is eighty-five thousand square feet, so again, smaller than the proposed Fox Hill, but the capacity of that building, working with MSBA, was five hundred students. So again, they align, they align there. What I'm most excited about with, with Fox Hill is the, the design reflects current standards, and I think will serve students and staff well into the, well into the future, and will finally have a building, I think, that represents the expertise of the educators and the staff at Fox Hill. And it's my pleasure to introduce Donna Denisco from Denisco Design, who will tell you more about that design and how it fits onto the school site.
Good evening. Thank you very much. When we started working with Burlington, it was probably close to two years ago, the first thing we recognized was the absolute beauty of the existing Fox Hill site, with the wetlands, the veronal pools, the forested areas, and the trails going through and around the site. We were like, wow, what an amazing location for a school. But before we started to actually start thinking about the design of the school, we wanted to know what was important to you, to Burlington. We talked with many people, we had visioning sessions and asked what your goals and visions are for the project. And as it relates to the site, what we heard was, it was important to create a new school and landscape that enhances the existing character of the site. Safety, of course, is incredibly important, and it was so important to provide safe separation of cars, buses, and vans, as well as safe routes and connections for pedestrians and bicyclists. What was also really important was that this is a community. The Fox Hill community is amazing, but this extends to the entire Burlington community, to create a sense, a, a school that fosters a sense of community and maintain and enhance the community connections. So based on the vision and goals that we heard, this is the site plan. We'll be locating the new school to the north of the existing school. The existing school needs to remain in operation while the new school is in construction. So it was really important to think through how we can separate the school operation from construction, and locating it in this north of the school will allow us to do that. Demolishing the existing school sits right in the middle of the site truly opens up the site, as you can see. This also allows us to have a full, a full-size lacrosse field, which can also be utilized for three U-ten fields. The other part that we did hear during the fact-finding stages was that the traffic intersection at Westwood and Fox Hill was somewhat problematic. Working with public safety officials, the school department, safe routes to school, and our traffic consultant, we really believe that we have found a solution that will improve the traffic circulation in and around the neighborhood, as well as supporting the school itself. Do we get stuck? Uh-oh. Let me try this. It got tired. There we go. Okay. So, so when you, just to zoom in a little bit more, to give you a little more context, we really have actually, you're going to hear the word flexibility a lot tonight. We have separate dedicated drop-offs for buses, dedicated for vans, as well as for cars. And with cars, we're actually able to provide the queuing that currently exists at Fox Hill that extends onto Fox Hill Road, actually to occur on-site. So we believe this is a much improved traffic circulation. We also got excited talking to the educators and understanding what their visions and goals are for their new school. What rose to the top was to create a healthy and safe learning environment that provides a sense of belonging. You'll hear, again, the word flexible, to provide flexible and adaptable learning spaces that support all types of learners. But this building will be with you for decades to come, so it's really important to, to design a school that can be flexible for changes in program, as well as enrollment needs. And then staying on the theme of longevity, we wanted to definitely create and design a durable and quality materials that are easily maintained. And sustainability is just so important for, for every aspect of today. And we're really pleased to say that we will be having, we're targeting a gold certification from LEED. It will be an all-electric building utilizing ground-source heat pumps or geothermal wells. We've taken the time to be careful about the placement of the mechanical equipment on the roof so you can maximize solar panels. And although they're not part of this project, we've provided the infrastructure within the building, so it'll just be plug-and-play when you install them. We went a little step further with the solar panels and actually started thinking about, perhaps you can actually put solar canopies in the parking lot. And again, we're providing that infrastructure so the town has that opportunity, if they would like to introduce those later. But with these sustainability elements, not only is it great for our environment, it's also, you got additional money from the MSBA. We are getting incentives, financial incentives from Mass Save, and we have the potential to also get incentives or rebates from the Inflation Reduction Act. I'll go through the first, the floor plans pretty quickly. The building is organized in a very simple manner. You enter the building in the middle, and then on the left, the purple spaces, those are your academic classrooms. To the right is the community wing. We've created a dedicated entrance for the community wing so that when the community is using the school, we can close down the rest of the building so we can keep everyone in the community wing. Upstairs really mimics, the second floor mimics the first floor. Just to pay a little close attention to the organization, can you see my mouse? No, you can't. To the organization of the classrooms, the classrooms are in the purple. And what we heard from educators was, was really important to provide all different types of learning environments for students. So we've created what we call a project area, and you'll see in a video in a minute, that is outside of two classrooms. It's like an extension of a classroom for small group instruction, one-on-one instruction, or even project-based learning. And across the hall are two other classrooms. So you'll hear, again, in a few minutes, that this does not exist in the existing Fox Hill School. This allows you to have a grade level, all together collaborating and sharing resources and working with all of the students. There'll be three grades per floor. And then on the other side, the community wing, just to round off the community use spaces, we have the media center, a library, a science tech engineering space, as well as an art classroom. So this rounds it off with a steam suite. So I did a lot of talking, but as architects, we say that, you know, a photo says a thousand words, or a video says a thousand words. So I'm going to attempt to share with you what we're envisioning of the school. So as you can see, locating the building to the north, it truly opens up the site. We've organized the building so that we have north-south solar orientation, which maximizes daylight and minimizes glare. We've created this amazing play area with a fully accessible playground outside of the gymnasium, but also along the community fields. We have an outdoor learning in the rear, as well as outdoor dining adjacent or outside of the cafeteria. We really have thought about cost, and it was really important to make sure that it was a cost-effective design, but it was also needed to be durable, and it needs to be easily maintained. Utilizing the most cost-effective material, which is masonry, we're able to achieve this, as this will be with you for many decades. We started thinking about security, again, security and safety. So we've designed a vestibule, a locked vestibule, as visitors and parents enter the school. They must check in within the vestibule, and once their credentials are checked, they enter into the main lobby, which is supervised by the main office. Across the hall is the cafetorium, right? New, new jargon here, with a lot of natural light and beautiful views to the outdoors and direct access to the outdoors for recess and outdoor learning. The hub of the school is the media center, again, taking advantage of this amazing site and a lot of natural light. We've created little areas within the media center so that it can accommodate your smallest learners, as well as your oldest students. We'll take you into the academic wing. This is the project area that I was referring to. It's located outside of two classrooms, and across the way are the other two classrooms for amazing collaboration for a grade level. All the classrooms are identical, so it gives you that flexibility as, as your needs change. And we've created a small differentiated learning within each classroom. So we hope you've enjoyed this little tour. We believe that it really has embraced the visions and the goals that we have heard for the last two, almost two years, and we're sure that this will be a welcome addition to the amazing education that Burlington has to offer. Sorry, you don't want to see it again.
Thank you. One of the benefits of doing such a detailed and exhaustive feasibility study, as Donna illustrated, is many components of the building are very thoughtful, and the design has progressed quite a ways. One of the, also one of the benefits is just as much detail and thought that has gone into the design has been reflected in the project budget. And so the budget that's been developed is a, a not-to-exceed and a manage-to budget. There may be opportunities to come in below that number, but the partnership with the MSBA is, is, they've committed the, their grant amount at their August board meeting. So the design has progressed. We've really put a lot of thought into developing the project budget, and we've been challenged by the town and the MSBA to make sure that that is, has been well thought out and detailed. Of course, a large portion of the, of the budget is the construction amount. And a little bit about the process and how we arrive at that amount is throughout the feasibility study, there have been three clear milestones where we've had independent estimators take a look at the design to inform and record where we're at, and so that the committee can make decisions from that point forward. And so while the, while the overall number hasn't changed a whole lot over the course of those two years, the amount of detail that goes into that to back up and, and to detail that project budget surely has. So as we mentioned in the August board meeting, the MSBA has committed to a maximum grant amount of nearly thirty-one million dollars, which reflects an estimated local share of sixty-nine point five million dollars, or approximately there. Donna mentioned there's several incentives that are available, both in addition to the MSBA at the state and federal level, which we've estimated to be approximately five and a half million dollars. So the adjusted, estimated adjusted local share after rebates is approximately sixty-four million dollars. This amount includes all the project soft costs for designer and management fees, the construction of the new building, and to furnish and install equipment in the new building. I by no means want to go into and steal Ways and Means thunder, but over the course of the feasibility process, we have been in collaboration with and of course always trying to keep an eye on what the adjusted or estimated impact will be on the average residential taxpayer. While that has changed somewhat over the past couple of years, it's generally stayed in the same range, and the adjusted local share estimated amount of 60 more, $64 million equates to the average residential taxpayers' contribution, annual contribution of around $211 to $217. A question we've been receiving as we approached town meeting was, you know, in the result that the vote should fail this evening, there remains a lot of the challenges at the existing building that will still need to be addressed. At a minimum of 10 years from now, if beyond the MSBA's plan as far, as far as this project is concerned, that partnership with the MSBA would have to be reinstated or reapplied. So there's that process to consider. But as I mentioned, the laundry list of items that brought this project to town meeting originally in terms of keeping the building running, keeping the building safe and operating would still need to be addressed in the short term and long term. And before I turn it over to Melissa, I did want to share a couple of words from the principal and the staff at Fox Hill.
So I could go on and on about all the good things about working at Fox Hill, but I think the most important thing is the community itself. The teachers, the kids, the families are all incredible, and everybody cares about each other so much. Every teacher here does so much for the children, cares so much about the children, and their number one priority is doing best for the kids every single day. So while working here is incredible, there are some challenges to the building that has made it difficult over the years to, to really work at an optimal level. I think one of the things that impacts me the most as the principal, every year we're having to switch people's classrooms to different spots. We've tried our best to keep grade levels together, which we're not even able to do. We're constantly having to switch people's classrooms to different pods. Another issue that we've come across is that we've run out of space, and office space has, is at a major premium here. We don't have much. We've had to build into the hallways. Every one of our pods now has offices in the hallway. We even have one pod that doesn't even connect anymore because we've had to build two office spaces to make sure that we have enough room for our specialists, such as special education and ELL.
Something I love about working at Fox Hill is the staff. They're amazing colleagues. I feel we all work together for the students. That's what our most important thing here is to make the students feel included and safe, and I think everyone here does a great job of that. Something about the building that makes teaching really difficult, one thing would be the lack of an air conditioning system. It is extremely hot in the beginning of the school year and the end of the school year. Students are hot, they can't perform, there's lack of motivation, they, they're just hot and drained, and as a teacher, I also can't teach in those teaching conditions. It's very challenging. Another thing about the school design would be some class, some grade levels are split across the building, and it makes it difficult to collaborate with your teammates or students who might be switching classrooms. So if all grade levels could be together, that'd be beneficial.
I'm Jen Jackson. I'm the teacher librarian at Fox Hill. And one of the things I love most about working at Fox Hill is the way that students are supported in all the different ways that they need to learn. Working here in the library at Fox Hill, there's a lot of limitations that we have, including probably our biggest shortcoming is the amount of shelving we're able to fit to meet student interest in the amount of books that they want. Our nonfiction section is limited because of shelf space, and we're unable to get as many of the topics covered as deeply as students would like us to. In fact, I had a student just last week tell me we didn't have enough books on gems or the Titanic, and a lot of that is limited.
Some of the things that I love about Fox Hill here is the community that we have here in Burlington, the relationships I build with families, the students and the staff. We are all committed to having our students learn, grow, and have a good time here at Fox Hill. Some of the limiting parts about our building that make it hard for us to do our job here, especially our walls. We have acornium walls that are not very soundproof. I can hear exactly what my coworkers in classroom next door is saying and hearing, as well as they hear things that are going on in our classroom, and the sound is disruptive to the students. A little bit hard for the staff to teach over, especially for students who have sensory issues. The other thing is the travel here at Fox Hill. Getting a kindergarten class from my classroom to art across the building through the pods, the, the, the building itself is a bit hard to navigate through. So going from one place to the next is actually a really challenging piece that you probably might not think of.
So I could go on and on about all the good things.
Sorry. With your support, this new school will provide not just modern classrooms, but a learning environment where our students can thrive, and our teachers will have the tools they need to inspire future generations. This will be an investment in upgrading Burlington's aging school infrastructure, which needs to begin now. Speaking of Burlington's school infrastructure, I must acknowledge the need and the priority of updating Burlington High School. I'm asking you here tonight to prove to this town and its current and future residents that you wholeheartedly support our educational infrastructure. We will be back here in one year asking for additional funding for a new or renovated Burlington High School. As you show your support tonight, I know that you will also support the high school project. Many of you have gotten emails and calls from families asking you to prioritize the high school. But Fox Hill is important too, and I believe we can have both if this body can commit to both. None of these projects are getting less expensive, and none are getting less urgent. If we plan to provide a 21st century education for all of our students of all ages and all demographics, we do need to make substantial investments. This is our only way to catch up and develop a sustainable, long-term capital improvement schedule that will last us the next 50 years. I believe we have a shared responsibility to provide our children with the best possible environment to learn and grow. Tonight, I ask for your support to approve this proposal, not just for the students of today, but for the future of Burlington. Let's build something that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Masardo. I believe that, does that conclude your?
Do I just turn it off?
That includes their presentation. Now I would like to recognize Chair of Ways and Means, Mr. Doug Davison, please.
Thank you. We also have a brief presentation. We'll try to keep it brief. A couple of members out there asked me to make sure that it was detailed and that I went slow, and so I'm going to do my best to satisfy brief and detailed and slow. So as a summary, I would, I would say that Ways and Means has been looking at this for several years. It certainly ramped up in the last year, but it's been something that's been a topic and been on our mind for some time. Recent inflation changed the discussion significantly. We went from a really rational $30 million number to $100 million in about four years. And we've seen that across the Commonwealth, and we've seen that with similar schools built four or five years ago compared to what's being built now. And it's unfortunate, but we don't see that changing. We strongly recommend that this body pass this, this warrant article. It's been through a rigorous two-year process. We can afford it without exceeding our levy limit, which is something that we're concerned with all the time. And we believe it makes the most sense to do it now while we have the available external funding to help. As we look at capital expenditures, and when I was thinking about even what questions do we ask, what do we do, I kept comparing it in my mind to a fire truck, because we ask very similar questions. I mean, a school or a fire truck, we kind of have the same questions in mind. And, and the first is, is it a need? Do we, do we resolve some known problem, or do we satisfy a defined need? And then have alternative options been evaluated? And so under the need category, we feel like that there's plenty of evidence of the need. It's a very well-defined problem, and though we've heard lots of opinions, we've not heard any significant opinion that would say we don't need to do anything to Fox Hill. So we're starting from a point where most everyone agrees that some things need to change and that something needs to happen at Fox Hill. Multiple alternatives were evaluated by the building committee, and as time went and as they met, they pared them down, and they would rule things out. And in the end, although there were discrepancies and discussions and different opinions, in the end, they came up with this project that they're presenting. It is a 91,000 square foot building, so it's 50% larger than what they currently have. It holds more students than they currently have. The number, the $104,84,141 is a not-to-exceed number, so they have to stay within that. It's not something that we're estimating or that we're going to come back and say we need more money. As, as the previous presenter said, we have about $31 million being paid by the MSBA, and then approximately $5.5 million in incentives. So the cost to the town is $64 million. And as horrible as that is, and as terrible as it sounds, it's as affordable as we think it's ever going to be. The next thing we look at is the impact on the town budget. So does it fit within our regular budget? And what's the impact on the taxpayer? And, and we do find ourselves focusing heavily on the residential taxpayer, but we also consider our commercial taxpayers, and it is something that we need to be aware of. So for the impact on the budget and our excess levy capacity, which is always a concern, there are some really important variables that require some assumptions. The variables that we identified as being the most important are new growth in taxable property, because that increases our levy limit. So we're allowed to add for new growth every year to our levy limit, levy limit. Our spending growth, so what does this body do every May when we approve a new budget? What percent increase over the previous year? And then what bond rate are we going to get for the, for the financing of this? For all of our scenarios, we have chosen 5% for the bond rate. We think that's a very conservative estimate, and we expect to come in lower than that, but we know we're not going to come in higher than that. So we looked at multiple scenarios, mostly just changing the first two variables to try to, to get a prediction of what it is we're looking at. The first scenario we looked at is keeping the way that, keeping those variables the same that they've been over the last four years. So those seem to be, it's a good number because it's post-COVID, so the world changed. But if we look at the time since COVID, we can look at those four years, and our new growth average over those four years was 1.9%, and our budget growth was 4.85%. If we put this project and the police station with those assumptions, we don't really have any significant worry about excess levy capacity. It goes well into the future before we have concern about that. That seemed like too optimistic for, for an assumption by Ways and Means, so we went a little more conservative. If you look at new growth and set that at 1.5%, which is significantly lower than our worst three-year average over the last 20 years. So we looked at, over the last 20 years, any three-year period, our worst three years have been 1.62% growth. And, and we lowered that down to 1.5. We kept the annual spending increases at 4.85%, so we didn't show any trimming of, of our regular budget increase. And again, 5% on the bond rate. With those really conservative projections, we have a six-year runway before we bump into the levy limit. And, and so that gives us some time. If everything seems to be going this most pessimistic way, we still feel like we have time to make some adjustments and changes, and it, and that felt like a safe number. One of the things we found is as you make these changes, we, this body can have a significant impact on those numbers with, with some relatively minor changes in the growth of the spending. So not saying we're cutting budgets, but by tenths of a percent, if you cut how much we increase our budget every year, you can have a substantial increase on this. So now we have some pretty bar graphs for you. This first one, the assumptions that we used for this first graph, that's the first assumptions that I told you about. So this is our, our base case is using spending growth of 4.85% and new growth at 1.94%, which is the average for the last four years. And you can see that, if you look at this chart, I'll just give you a rundown, and then all the subsequent charts follow this pattern. The lowest bar, the dark, dark blue, is, is our normal operating budget, and that's where you see the, the one point, I mean, the 4.85% growth year over year. Then we move to the orange, which is existing debt service. So that includes everything we've, we've bonded in the past, the rec maintenance building, the DPW building, all the smaller warrants that we bonded. And you can see that over time, that existing debt service actually shrinks because things are being paid off and go off of the, off of the debt service. The next, the next bar up, the green, is our anticipated new debt, expected new debt. We know that every year we're going to be bonding some things, and so that's been built in. And you can see as the orange bar gets smaller, the green bar gets a little bigger because we pay things off and we re-borrow. So those two together kind of stay about the same. Next would be the purple, which starts to come in in 2026, and then gets more substantial in '28 and '29, it becomes kind of a stable number. That's the police station bonding, and that shows the, the building process. And then blue, we get to the Fox Hill building, assuming we can pass that this evening, and you can see how it phases in. The line across the top is our levy limit, so that's where we need to stay below. And with these assumptions, if you'll shrink that back down, we go out to 2029, I'm sorry, 2036 without really, that's when we start to approach it. So that's a long runway and, and not a concern. That's based on the last four-year averages. So now we'll show you a couple of more showing kind of the sensitivity of growth and what happens to the chart. If you look at our last 20-year average, which it'd be great if we could continue that, but it's not expected, our last 20-year average is the top chart here. And, and in that case, over the last 20 years, we've seen 2.33% new growth, and our spending growth has been 4.71%. And you can see that actually the levy limit actually starts to diverge from our spending. It'd be a great problem to have, but it's not something that we're forecasting, but it does show just tiny changes, and those numbers can affect the, the outcome. The, the bottom chart here is what we've chosen to go with. It's our most conservative case, new growth at 1.5%, spending growth at 4.85%. And you can see that, and we start to bump in and get close to the levy limit after about six years. So what's the impact on the residential taxpayer? We saw, we heard from the previous presenter. Our expectation is that it will be no more than $217 per year. That's $18 a month for 25 years. It doesn't all happen at the same time. It phases in over the first several years. And that is based on an average assessment value of $725,000. So our average assessment value for homes in Burlington is $725,000. Interestingly, our median is lower than that, and so actually more than half of our residents will pay less than the $217 per year. At its maximum, that represents at or just under 3% of the taxpayers' tax bill. So if they take their bill and, and divide it out, about 3% of their tax bill will be going to pay for this project. Obviously, we're going to continue to increase their tax bill, unfortunately, and so that percentage will decrease over time. So the notes on bond payments and tax So the notes on bond payments and taxes, the $217 a year isn't, is an estimate of what the average residential taxpayer would pay if we borrowed the total all today and started paying tomorrow. But nobody's going to get a $217 increase tomorrow. This is going to be spread out over time. You can see 2024, there's zero, 2025, zero or next to it. In 2026, you'll start to see a ramp up, '27, '28, '29. The interesting thing is, because you can factor in new growth, and we know that we're going to get an increase in the number of taxpayers, and we're going to get an increase in the value of new growth properties that will pay taxes, it actually starts to reduce the impact on the taxpayer. And so even though we can say it's $217 a year, we can also say that we probably won't ever bump up to that number. It'll stay below that because of the timing and because of new growth. So another big question is, is kind of the timing of it, and what are the alternatives? How long can we wait? And in this, in this situation, mostly it was, what if we say no? You know, what's next? What happens if town meeting says no? Again, you kind of heard it, but our analysis was, well, the first thing is we lose $31 million from MSBA. That would be gone. Town meeting, this body must approve the borrowing by 12/22/24. So December 22 is the absolute cutoff date. At that point, we would be withdrawn from the program. So that would mean that with no inflation included, that would mean that we would go from $217 for the average residential taxpayer to $340 if we turned around and decided we still have to build this building to satisfy this need. We still have the same well-defined need, and we really fear a damage to the town's relationship with MSBA. It's not a threat, it's not something they've said, but it does make sense. The MSBA is not a massive organization. They have about 100 employees. Their job is to disperse money given to them by the state legislature and bring in projects. Their job is to finish schools and make people happy in those towns that won those grants. They've already been working on this for two years. Their employees have been working on this project for two years. And so if we walk away, it intuitively makes it a little less likely that they would be that interested in working with us again. There are some examples of towns choosing to walk away once they were in the process. And so far, the example plays out that it's a long run before they're entertained again. So that's not a threat from the MSBA, but it is, it's logical. And then finally, we're a little bit concerned that it would delay other needing projects. And again, that's not a threat, it's not, but the high school is our next big project, and this is further along, and it's a need, and we have to figure out what we're going to do to solve that and resolve the issues. And so thus the urgency to move on and accept the grant and move forward. So in that, there were other questions, and we've certainly talked about it. So what about Burlington High School? Also a well-defined need. This body's known about this for a long time. I think it was the right thing to do to push and try to get money for that project from MSBA. It's a much bigger price tag, and so their percentage would have been a much bigger number on their end. But, you know, in hindsight, maybe we waited too long, but it's what happened, and so now we're moving forward. You still can't argue with the need. As you saw, we have a feasibility study underway. It's really a little too early. We don't have enough data about the options and the cost to do tremendous projections. It's a much bigger project, and even the most conservative projections you might have on the cost do tell us that it's going to require a debt exclusion vote by the entire town. There isn't a way that the cost of that project will fit under that levy limit line, and that triggers a debt exclusion vote. And so we feel like that, the BHS project is going to happen when this body, and more importantly, when the entire town decides that they're ready to pay for that by approving a debt exclusion. I think that's going to be an important vote, and it's going to be an important process. So Ways and Means has said that we feel like the high school is the next big project on the horizon. That's what we expect to start working on as soon as we start getting numbers, and we're ready to help get that done. We would just like to see this get approved now and be able to move forward. If you look at just another graph here, the green is the addition, and the green represents a high school project estimated at $250 million. And if you start that in 2029, where you really start with the borrowing, you'll see that very quickly it bumps against the levy limit, which is the dark line. And then the red line above would be the levy limit after a debt exclusion vote. So that, even if you took the police station and the fire station, I mean, I'm sorry, the police station and Fox Hill out, there's really still not, not nearly enough space under that dark line to incorporate something the size of a high school project. So next, what about Pine Glen? We talked about Pine Glen. We feel like there was significant input from the community, parents, Pine Glen teachers, all saying that they wanted to keep Pine Glen as a separate and distinct facility. As compared to Fox Hill, we were told that it's a much, much more functional design, even down to the shape of the classrooms. It still makes it functional in today's educational world, and it works well for current best practices. From a financial perspective, we were, we found that it's a structurally sound building. The external engineering reports and the evaluation from the external professionals told us this building would last many years with ongoing maintenance and care. It has a relatively new roof that is in good shape. It's been well taken care of. It has new AC and heat units. And so we feel like that building's got a lot of life left to it, and we're comfortable that we can move forward with this without having to replace that building also. And it will fit into the timeline as we move down the road. So it's never easy to spend this much money, but we believe it's important to fund the project now, keep the town moving forward with our infrastructure needs, and not let things back up.
Thank you, Mr. Davison. Is there any other committee that has input on this? Well, in that case, we will open it up for discussion. Questions on this project?
Gary Kasky, Precinct 6. What would the commercial rate be on the increase for the new school? What would the rate on the commercial side be?
Go ahead.
It's, thank you. So that it all depends on the size of the commercial property. We did look at the full spectrum.
No, I'm, excuse me, I'm talking about the increase for the new Fox Hill school.
As a dollar figure.
What would the increase be on the commercial side for that?
It depends on the property holder. Yeah, so the 217 is indexed to the average property value of a residence. If you give me a moment, I can look up and give you the rate per, per value of property.
I mean, if the residential taxes are going up, I would assume that the commercial rate would go up also.
It goes up proportionally.
Because of the schools.
Right. Yeah. So, oh, the 3%. Yeah, so it would be an additional 3% of what they're paying. And that's going to be phased in over several years, and it's going to be, it's not going to cause an unusual tax rate increase.
So you're saying it would be 3%?
Yeah, yeah.
Chris Warren, Precinct 4. I just want to make sure I understand. When we met four months ago in May, I believe the recommendation of Ways and Means was to do a debt exclusion for the police station and Fox Hill that would take place in a townwide vote in April of 2025. I assume that's what we're still talking about here.
Mr. Davison.
Through the moderator. That wasn't exactly the recommendation. So to clarify, our recommendation was that the police station and the Fox Hill project would fit within the budget. It was our recommendation that after passing this in the future, and we were, we were looking at the spring of 2025, that the town consider a debt exclusion to exclude the debt from both of those projects. But we decided it wasn't necessary. It's not needed to start the projects, it's not needed to pay for the projects. Debt exclusion in that case, and the way we would like to continue using it is as a budgeting tool to better protect that levy limit and our excess capacity. And so we would still say that that's the next step for those two projects, just for our debt as a tool to say, we may want to find a number, and we can't tell you that number yet. It's probably realistically, in a healthy way, somewhere, some combination of those two projects that would just expand the difference between the levy limit and what we're, what we're spending. But it, it isn't a number that we would require a debt exclusion, so we did not recommend that it be tied to the project.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I distinctly remember reading articles, and I can bring them up, that says that the Ways and Means Committee recommends the debt exclusion for these two projects. So I apologize for, I must have missed a lot of the conversation. Okay. Okay, thanks, thank you.
Ms. Byer. And we'll get up to Alex in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. I went to one of the Fox Hill School Building Committee meetings over a year ago and sat through the planning stages of all of this. And I want to say how impressed I am by the amount of detailed work that has been put in by so many people in this community, by the schools, by the teachers, by the families. And I appreciate all of the work and the number crunching that has been done by Ways and Means, because this is very much over my head in many ways. But what was presented tonight, brought forward under the leadership of Melissa Massardo, I think is just amazing based on what I had seen previously and what they have brought to us to be able to vote on tonight. I think this is an outstanding plan with so many moving parts, and I think it is the best we are going to get. And so I am in favor of going with the Fox Hill project at this point. I believe this is in the best interest of our community, best interest of our property values, and most importantly, the best interest of the education of the children in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alex Ruffield, Precinct 5. So the Fed cut rates by about half a percent last week, and I was wondering if that could either help us get like a much better bond rate and save a little money, or if it could lead to these contractors seeing like a spike in demand and then trying to ask us for more money. I just want to make sure, like, you know, you're not going to come back in January asking for like, you know, another 10 million, but it will be at 3 or 3.5%.
Mr. Davison.
Through the moderator. So this is a not to exceed number, so, and it's being designed and built to that number, so we don't anticipate anybody having to come back and ask for more money. The only, we're told, I don't know if Mr. D'Nizio is still here. He is in the back. So correct me if I'm wrong. The Fed rate cut does not have as much of an impact on the bond rating as it does on your home mortgage. I'm getting the thumbs up. So it does have an impact to some degree. We get a better rate. Municipal bonds come in at a better rate than a home mortgage or something like that. So changes in that Fed rate are, it impacts it, but not as much.
Snap to the back and the baseball hat.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Liz DiTucci, Precinct 6. I'm going to support this Warren article even though I don't feel it's the most optimal proposal. I wish it's good enough, wasn't what we had before us. I still actually have this pamphlet from the May town meeting that said the building will have three classrooms per grade, so I'm concerned about enrollment, capacity, whatever we're going to call it. I now see in the backup, it says up to four classrooms per grade, so I'm not sure what changed. But at this point, I have no choice but to trust Dr. Conti's words, that this plan for a new Fox Hill will accommodate all of the current 440 students plus our growing special needs population without redistricting or overcrowding, as been stated. You know, we've been a Fox Hill family in my house for the last eight years, where it's been overcrowded. This has been a really important and unanswered issue of mine. I went before the school committee six years ago about these concerns, and no action was taken until new members were elected to the board. So I want to echo Kathy Byer's statement that there have been a lot of meetings for this Fox Hill School Building Committee. Thank you to Chair Melissa Massardo for your leadership and finally moving the needle to get our first school building in 13 years. Thanks to Jeremy Brooks for pressing the school administration to draft an infrastructure plan. We need that. And thank you to Catherine Bond for the update on the high school earlier and for chairing the High School Building Committee so that project moves ahead quickly. I'm happy to see the town is finally investing in our school infrastructure, especially the high school. And I look forward to next September where we see that before town meeting. Thank you.
Dr. Conti, any comment on, on the number of classrooms?
Through the moderator. The building is designed around four classroom pods, but we would be using those classrooms for different programming at this time. Just to confirm, Mr. DiTucci, I did ask David Rosenblatt, the principal, if the building were to be available next week, which it won't be, to move all of his current students in the special education programming that currently exists with a number of students and additional, and additional special education programming. And the students fit much more appropriately in the new Fox Hill than in the current building. Again, the new building is 50% larger than the, than the current school.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Ms. Law. Backphone over here, please.
Sharon Lawrie, precinct three. I did tour the Fox Hill. Thank you, the principal David. The school is in need of repair. That is true. There's a large price point. That is true. The number 13 sticks into my head. 13 years for this school, and it's not done. So what is the real big need here? You're going to get $33 million in incentives. If you look at the draw and say list they displayed, there's drop-ins for your solar panels, but the solar panels aren't going up. So how much does it cost to put solar panels up there? Another issue I see. We know there's probably lead. There's probably asbestos, maybe mercury, because all of that is in this school today. So is that incorporated in the price point to remove all of those issues that may be there? If not, there's a problem there. So you look at it, one school, so one quarter. The high school represents the entire town of Burlington. We're being told we need to spend the money, right? So you look at your tax rate. $217 for the middle school. Approximately $180 taxes a year for the police station. What do you think your tax rate's going to be for the high school? And now you're going to leave that up to the voters? If you're going to leave that up to the voters, this should be left up to the voters as well. Because we, this board, this town meeting members, we're supposed to be watching out for the entire community of Burlington. And by going for one smaller school that's been in process for three years versus something that's been going on for 13 years, to me is inexcusable, and it's downright irresponsible. And don't get me wrong. Fox Hill deserves a new school. They clearly deserve a new school. This is not the time for Fox Hill if all of us have been waiting 13 years to get this school done. You had a couple of people speak out about this on a board, maybe one or two people. You need to listen. You know, a lot of people are on fixed incomes. And so when you're talking maybe over $1,000, if all three of these go through, if you're on a fixed income, it's not that easy to pull off. And then you have to add in, we have all these migrant peoples coming into every community, every community. So the 325 students, that number may be going up dramatically. And so you need to take all of that into consideration. And so you're going to start off the school technically larger, but you're going to house technically less people, maybe, maybe not. But no one counted in the migrants. So what happens there? So you have room to expand. So your $33 million that you thought you saved, it gets thrown away. So please, please, think before you vote. Because, like I said, Fox Hill, they need a new school. Burlington High needs a new school. Burlington High encompasses the entire community. And that's what we really need to think about. And after that's done, I will be your first cheerleader to help you get the Fox Hill going, and I promise you that. But we need to be responsible and accountable, accountable to all the residents of Burlington. Thank you.
Dr. Conti, any follow up on this?
Mr. Moderator, I think there was a question about asbestos and some of the other parts to it. So Ms. Dinesco.
Thank you, sure. The first question, I think, was about the solar. And yes, the solar panels are not included in the project, but we actually did a detailed study. And you have two options to pursue solar. You can purchase the solar. And we did a payback of less than eight years that you could actually purchase all the solar required on the site to make this a net zero building. And the payback would be eight years. And after eight years, you're essentially not paying your utility bills going forward. Another alternative would be to go through a power purchase agreement where you don't own the solar panels. In fact, you rent them, right, from a utility company. So that's another option, which the school department's looking at and evaluating as soon as this project is supported tonight. Yeah, the asbestos and lead and all of those comments, we have done a full evaluation of asbestos-containing materials, hazardous materials, lead abatement that would be required. And those numbers are included in the project budget. Thank you.
Further questions? Up here on the aisle there in the back. No, not you, Michelle, other side of the aisle. You'll get your chance right there. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Florence Leone, precinct one. While I understand everything that Sharon said, I don't agree. I think it's too important to the children. You cannot have the kids go to school in a building that has probably mold and allergens. It's not healthy for the kids. It's not a good learning environment. We need to take care of the kids so that they can learn and thrive and make it to high school. I know it's a lot of money. I don't really want my taxes to go up any more than they have. But I think we have no choice. If we want our property values to maintain their value and we want to attract young families to Burlington and to the Fox Hill community, we need to build a new school. When my daughter attended in 1998, after having gone to Pine Glen and Francis Wyman, I was horrified at the conditions in 1998. So I really don't think that we can wait any longer to build a new school for these kids. And I agree with Kathy Byer's. Everyone has put a lot of time and effort into this project. And I would hate to see it fail tonight.
Yes, Michelle Huntoun, go ahead.
Thank you. Michelle Huntoun, precinct one. Full disclosure, my family would directly benefit from this. My daughter will be attending Fox Hill School in a couple of years. I want to say that I am very disappointed by the argument that I have seen made in the community about how the high school services everyone and an elementary school only services a small portion. That's the case with a lot of things we spend money on. That's just how it works. We put money into roads that I don't drive on. We spend money for the Council on Aging. I don't benefit from that. You can't consider those two projects to be mutually exclusive. They are both needs. And it's been said over and over again and laid out very clearly by people who put a lot of time and resources into this, that both projects need to be done and that if we walk away from this now and we walk away from the MSBA funds and try to push this down the line, we are walking away from $35 million potentially. Now, if you want to talk about being on a fixed income and being worried about your taxes going up, your taxes are going to go up. That's going to happen. If you want to give us a bigger price tag on a Fox Hill school by making us wait, your taxes are going to go up even more, as Mr. Davison explained. You're looking at $217 a year potentially versus $340 a year potentially. It's a very clear-cut math problem that people who are good at math have done for us. Thank you for that. I think it's important that we invest in these kids, that we invest in educational infrastructure. You want your property values to go up. The school system matters. What we provide for our community matters. And this is your opportunity to show the people you represent that you care about that. Thank you.
Mr. Collins. And we'll get Ms. Asher.
Thank you. Dan Collins, precinct six. Fox Hill is in my precinct, and so I do get a lot of calls. And I think what's consistent amongst everybody who's voting no or voting yes, or maybe on the fence, is that Fox Hill is necessary. But what's also consistent is we're concerned about the tax burden. As I looked at the graphs there, it looked to me like 12 years out is when we're really kind of maxing out our options there. So one of the things that was mentioned really quickly in there was the potential for cuts in growth spending. And so I thought maybe Ways and Means or somebody could explain a little bit more about that and whether or not that's going to get us to the 12 years or if that could extend us beyond the 12 years or if there's other potential greater cuts that are possible so that we're reducing that tax burden on those of us with limited income, fixed income, so on and so forth.
Mr. Davison, please.
Thank you. So that was an illustration of the fact that we can make changes in that bar graph with some very small... I don't want to say cuts, because they're not cuts in spending. They're cuts in growth of spending. And so any change that we make going from 4.85, which is, you know, what we baked in there and is what we've done in the last several years, even tenths of a point down, would definitely make a difference. That's this body's decision. We'll certainly make recommendations when the budget comes forth, as we always do. If we see that things are worse than our pessimistic outlook, then that might be something that we come to you with and say, all right, we need to make a little bit of a change and not grow by as much. It's very tough. When you look at our budget, 85% of it or so is personnel cost. So unless we think that we really have too many employees in town, which I don't think that most people think we do, then that's a fairly fixed cost. There's a pretty small percentage of the operating budget that we have much say over as a body here to change. So much of it is prescribed and statutorily required and kind of out of our control. And everything gets more expensive, trash and fuel and all of those things. So I think that the town does a pretty good job of being conservative. But with some tiny decreases, what we were just trying to show is that it is sensitive to that and you can make a difference. And we didn't build that in to justify the... You know, making this fit under the levy limit.
Thank you, Mr. Davison. Ms. Asher.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Kate Asher. I'm precinct four. This project won't directly affect me. I no longer have kids in school. I want to talk about, though, an impact on another segment of our community, and that's parents. I remember looking, myself and our family, in 2000 at private school back then. And I shudder to think of what it is now. It was about $25,000 a year for the school level we were looking at. I did some quick math to give perspective on 100 million. That would take 200 students for 20 years to reach 100 million at that rate. So it's a huge impact on parents with kids in school. The reason I didn't go to the private school route in 2020 because my facility's options became private school on Zoom. So we didn't go that route. But it is a huge impact on families. And like others have mentioned, families with children who often comprise the employee population as well in town.
Ms. DeTucci. And we'll get to Mr. Boyver in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan DeTucci Jr., precinct six. Have a long history with this school. I attended the school, as did my two brothers in the 80s. And, you know, my two daughters, Grace and Maggie, spent the last eight years at this school with my youngest graduating in June. So I probably have a 20-year tenure in this school. I first wanted to say I'm very supportive of the schools in this town and have a vested interest in the success of our school system. We've been pushing for a new Fox Hill school for the past many years, as has already been stated. And I really appreciate the renewed push in the last couple of years to try to get this done. I'm not here tonight to talk about the priority of when school should be done. That decision's already been made, and that's fine. What I am here to speak about is specifically, you know, we're talking about the population, increases, decreases, flatlining. What I'm seeing is some things that are going to definitely impact the population of this town. So recently, the state of Massachusetts approved the accessory use dwelling, which every home in this town, which by the way, we have 5,000 homes in this town, is going to be able to put an accessory use dwelling on their property, up to 900 square feet. And in speaking with Barbara LaRue from the Planning Board, we really, other than making sure they've, you know, hit the setbacks and so on, there's really nothing we can do. So that is absolutely going to impact the population of this town. And I have not heard it discussed at all tonight. Number two. There's been discussion, an ongoing discussion, with Burlington and Simon Properties about the reimagination of the Burlington Mall, right? We know the Burlington Mall as it stands is not going to last for a very long time. So they want to look at reusing the parking lots and some of the space they have there. They're talking about bringing in, you know, retail and a residential component. So if that goes through, that's going to increase the population of this town. Number three. The MBTA community bylaw is allowing us to build on the Staples site up to 400 apartments. And in addition, in speaking with the Planning Board, they're looking to bring forward some ideas around middle housing in areas of the town that abut, where residential housing abuts industrial sites, you know, trying to basically create more affordable housing, which everybody's screaming for in this town because the cost of housing is going up, the rates are up, and people cannot afford to live in the town. So with that all being said, I asked the Ways and Means Committee, have we factored this population into our calculations? And this is also for Dr. Conti. Have we factored all these factors around population into our decision to build a 325 school? Thank you.
Which one of you wants to go first?
Mr. Davis. All right. I'll go first. That means you're going second. You can clean up my mess. So it's difficult to... We certainly talk about that. It's a consideration. It's difficult to put a number on that. You can't put a number on it. None of us can put a number on that. We expect some growth. The MSBA has a track record of being really accurate with long-term projections. And they look at a significant number of items, including the things that you listed. They show us a small decrease in population over time, more about birth rates and those kinds of things. So we also know that the data says that people are having fewer kids and that younger people are saying they don't want to have any kids. And, you know, so we're also, as a country, looking at the potential of problems of having a decreasing population or an increasing aging population. So I believe that the MSBA factors all of that into their projections. The fact is, I mean, the 325 is a number that throws everybody off. But this is a bigger school. We got a bigger school with more classrooms. We have more flexibility. So if we approve this school and after it's built, Dr. Conti? and after it's built, Dr. Conti can correct me, but I believe that we will have a significant number more seats than the MSBA says we'll need. So I think we have some flexibility built into that. I also think that some of what you're, you know, you're concerned about, which are valid, come a little further into the future, and that may be, that could be built into the next school project, which might be Pine Glen, or, you know. So at this point, it's hard to justify building an even bigger school for a future that's at least far enough into the future that it won't impact this program as much as it might the next.
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, I agree with Mr. Davison. The school we're building has 28 classrooms, full-size classrooms available, which is larger than the current school. So again, we think the building has a capacity, ultimately, if we needed to, for roughly around 500 students. It doesn't need to be that large or be that occupied in its early life. But we have future flexibility. And Mr. DiTucci, I guess, that gets, I guess, to one of my strong reasons for supporting four elementary schools on four sites, is I thought about the person in my job 20 or 30 years from now, what tools would they want to have? And what I've observed, and please very respectfully, is school sites have been converted or given away. When I first came, I think Meadowbrook was maybe a school that wasn't in function. And I just think maintaining four elementary school building sites would give someone like me tools, potentially, if those population changes that you've said occur, for the school district to make some adjustments for that. The significant growth that you're talking about would certainly need to be considered. But I do think maintaining four elementary school sites would allow this body and the town, and again, the person sitting in my seat, some flexibility as to how to approach that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Boyven. I'll get to you next. Go ahead, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. I've got a bunch of rapid-fire questions. I won't get too granular. But I guess my first question is, I know that a major development seemed to happen in the last couple of days where the school committee drafted a new version of the capital plan. It exists in a draft form, and it has the high school coming in. I'm just trying to conceptualize what the next 10 years are going to look like on spending if we go down this road. So I understand the capital plan, the draft form now has the high school being put forward in FY '27. When will that draft become the actual timeline? When will that get ratified? I guess that's one question through the moderator I'd like to ask Dr. Conti. I also have Sharon Laurie behind me whispering in my ear that one of her questions wasn't answered, so if you could include that also. Her question was pertinent to if we have an estimate on what the solar panels may cost on top of Fox Hill. Lastly, my question would be to Ways and Means, when will they begin digesting the draft form of the capital plan that schools committee submitted the last few days?
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Starting with the solar panels first, and we have experts here, so you don't need to listen to me. In the solar study, there are two ways to go about it. I think the solar panels themselves would cost roughly $3.5 million if we were to purchase them. But again, we don't have to purchase them. We could come into some sort of power agreement. My understanding as well is just putting solar panels on the roof provides about 50% of the building's electric needs. Putting solar panels on the roof and doing the parking lot awnings would essentially make the building a net-zero building. We would produce enough power to run the expected power use in the building. So we have lots of options. Again, the infrastructure, the placement of the equipment on the roof has all been taken into consideration to place solar panels on. We just have to make some adjustments. There was a question that was asked at the pre-town meeting that when the construction documents are done and we go out to bid, and let's say a construction company comes in and they're $3.5 million under the total expenditure, one option for the building committee to consider would maybe to spend that dollar on purchasing the solar panels. So again, there's a way for us to do this without purchasing them. There's a way for us to do this with purchasing them. And then there's also a way for us to do it gradually on the roof alone or on the roof in the parking lot alone. So I think that's trying to answer that question, and I hope I didn't butcher that. Adam, I'm sorry. The draft of the plan, the spending plans have always sort of been a draft. We can adopt it. I think it's meant to be a planning document. And I would say the process has changed over time. I think those documents are becoming more important, given the price of things that we are currently seeing. So what do I mean by that? Is every town manager has sort of had a different way of working with the schools, and that's from Bob Mercier to John Petron to Paul now. And so I think the documents are much more important now, again, because the dollar figures are much better. So what do I mean by that? Ways and Means with the town, the town's finance committee typically, when I first got here, there would be a debt curve. And essentially, what they would say is as projects came off, new projects would go on. So that you all, as a body, would approve sort of that expected long-term borrowing as we went. So I would say the curve sort of drove the project, if that makes any sense at all. So you couldn't even propose something unless there was room under the curve, and then people took turns. So Memorial and the middle school fit under the curve. And then new town manager said, okay, school step back. And now we're going to do Police Station, DPW. And again, it was the curve that defined everything. But now, when one building costs $100 million, and I'm not sure this was ever done consciously, so no one's ever told me this, this is my own sort of twisted thinking, is now that planning makes sense because now the building project is driving the curve that people are presenting to you tonight, not the other way around. So I think this document is taking on more weight than it had. And so that's why I think the process has changed a little bit. And why didn't we push something for 10 years? I'm hearing that is really because the way that we had managed projects before, it was the town's turn to spend the money under the curve, and we were to wait and maintain. And then when it became our turn, we would spend under the curve. But you really can't take $100 million or whatever and sort of operate that way anymore. So we are trying to get that planning document to Ways and Means for them to look at that. Going out, foreign prices may not be super accurate. So if we're saying in 10 years, we need whatever, given the inflation that we've seen, it's really hard to predict. But I do think we need to be better about the projects that we see coming, and so that Ways and Means can do better planning. So again, I think the process has changed with the inflation that we've seen. And I hope that's a fair thing to say. Mr. Iler, you sort of have lived through this a little bit, so that's what I would say.
I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Back here on the aisle. Oh, no, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Mr. Boyven, please. I don't mean to keep forgetting you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I want to go back and reiterate what Ms. Byer said and congratulate the people who have gotten us to this point. The amount of work that's been done, the amount of effort, the amount of thought that's gone into this is impressive, and I think the product we have in front of us is impressive. When I first heard $1.5 million for a feasibility study, I was like, that sounds like a lot of money. But from what I see, we got out of it, I think we got our money's worth on that. But my main point is, I understand the frustration people have about 12 years of effort and still no progress in the high school. But, you know, we can't go back and undo whatever decisions and strategies were made over that time period. We are where we are today. And today, we have this proposal in front of us with a $30-plus million of supplement coming in from outside the town, and we have the high school process already started with a new feasibility study. If we were to terminate the elementary school proposal today and say, we're not going to do this, the high school wouldn't get done any sooner. The process has started, and it's going to follow the same strategy and schematic as the elementary school did. So denying this project now doesn't make the high school happen any faster. They both need to be done. And I think from where we are today, we should approve this. I'm 100% in favor of it. And then get moving as fast as we can in developing the high school. Thank you.
Yes, a woman back here in the gray shade. Go ahead, youth.
Mindy Meyer, Precinct 3. I was reached out to a resident and asked me to speak on his behalf because he couldn't be here tonight. Dear town meeting members, my name is Jean LaChansky, and I've been a resident of Burlington for the past 12 years. I have three kids in the Burlington school system and a fourth who will soon be enrolling. Many of you know me as I am also a volunteer soccer coach and referee for both town, club, and high school aged youth, and spend many weekends coaching and refereeing soccer games. As coaches and referees, we serve all children of Burlington equally and seek to provide the best possible experience for everyone, knowing that these early formative years will have an enormous impact on their future development as students and members of our society. I would like to kindly ask that you support the Fox Hill rebuilding project and that as a community, we strive to provide the best possible service for all our children. As I support the rebuilding of the Fox Hill, I will support the rebuilding of the Burlington High School as an investment in the future for all of our children is most important duty to the next generation. I will continue to support our education infrastructure development as my kids age out of the school system, along with other projects that make Burlington the vibrant community that it is. Thank you, Jean LaChansky. I am a member of the Precinct 3. My kids go to Memorial, so this school will not directly impact me. But when I did move here 12 years ago, one of the things that was of big interest to me was that Memorial was one of the new schools that did get the money from state funding. I think to say no on this and to reject the money is a stupid decision personally. I think we have the money. We have had all of the planning over the past couple of years, and I think it's something we should truly consider, and I would hope your support on it. Thank you.
Mr. Connors.
Sean Connors, Precinct 3. Move the question.
All right, there's been a motion to move the question. This takes a 2/3 vote. If you don't want to move the question, vote against it. I'm going to ask folks to stand on this. All those in favor of moving the question, please stand.
Point of information, point of what? I think there's residents of both sides that might be here to speak tonight. If we do approve the question, I think we should give them a call.
Well, I'm kind of locked into Robert's rules here, but Adam, if we move the question, then we move the question. All right. Thank you. All right, sit down, please. All those opposed to moving the question. 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24. There've been approximately 24 people opposed out of 100. It has more than the 2/3 in favor of moving the question. So now we will move on to vote.
Point of information, we know the total number of members still present?
Exactly no.
Last count was 112.
There were 112 here. If we've lost a few, we still make the 2/3. If anyone wishes to make us have a count, we can do that. But I think the numbers are pretty clear, or else I would not have called it. So that brings us to voting on the question. And for the residents, I'm sorry that you didn't get a chance to speak, but this is the process and this is just how the meeting runs. So all those, and I am going to go directly to a standing count on this. So Mr. D'Nizio and folks, you have people ready to count?
Yep.
And they don't have to take off their shoes? Good. All those in favor, please stand.
Hey, Bill. You didn't have a question. I don't think you announced in the beginning of the meeting that it continued to be the 20 second issue. I mean, I missed this one still.
There, did maybe?
Oh, I missed that.
Come on.
30.
She's been sleeping.
You have?
30.
30.
One online.
One online.
Thank you.
66.
66.
There are also two more sitting over there.
I don't even know if they're town meeting members, are they?
Yeah, they are. There are two.
Well, I don't know if you counted them or not, but let's see what the... All right. All those opposed?
Two.
Five.
There've been 97 in favor and seven opposed. The motion has clearly more than 2/3, and it passes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You don't want to stay and talk to me longer?